Called to order the regular meeting of the Everett City Council, Wednesday, December 26th. Clerk will read the roll.
Counsel Capone.
Here.
Counsel Delisola.
Here.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Here.
Counsel DePiero. Counsel Hammond.
Here.
Counsel Marquez.
Here.
Counsel Matruski.
Here.
Counsel McKenna.
Here.
Counsel McGraw-Lawson. Counsel Sanelli.
Here.
President Napolitano.
Here.
Counsel McGraw-Lawson is here. Do have a phone.
Please rise to salute the flag.
Flag was allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I ask everybody, remain standing for a moment of silence. Everett City has lost people this week that are dear and near and dear to our hearts. For us, I'll offer my condolences to Michael Matarazzo, former city clerk, former member of this body, whose mother passed away. I'd also like a few minutes of a moment of silence for Cecilia Cattaldo-Matarazzo, tragically passed away last week. Cecilia was a member of our school committee, Board of Registrazz, Board of Assessors, Vice President of the Quanis Club, active volunteer member at the St. Anthony's Church, person very near and dear to many people in this community and will be sorely missed. We offer condolences to her father, her children, and also to the mayor and Councilman DePiero, who are also related. So I'd like a moment of silence. Mr. President, making it customary for, to carry on tradition here, we're going to be giving you your gavel and your plaque tonight, and wishing you well for a year well done. And I'd like to start now if I could.
The chair recognizes Counsel McKenna.
Thank you. It's about time. No, I'm only four.
I try to give everybody a little bit of leeway here.
Absolutely. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As a member with the most consecutive years of service here tonight in the City Council, it is my pleasure to present to the outgoing president a plaque commemorating his term of office and a gavel as a symbol of his authority. It gives me a great pleasure to do this for outgoing president, Peter A. Napolitano. He handled the gavel with authority, with much authority, and I will touch on that later on here. And, but with equal justice for all. He was fair and impartial and did a great job. I am proud to give him this plaque and gavel. But equally, I am equally proud to give him the gavel that he destroyed, the night that he was trying to quiet me down. Here is the piece, sir. Let me, let me read this here. City Council President Peter A. Napolitano has served Everett City Council for the year 2018, whereas in the forms of his duties as president, he has ever been acu... What? Right there. Whereas acuted by a spirit of fairness and a desire to maintain harmonious relationships between himself and the members, and whereas his effort, efforts in this direction have won for him the respect and goodwill of his fellow members, thereby enabling him to, at all times, to maintain the dignity of his office. Therefore, it be resolved that in full recognition of his valid, valued services, this testimony will be presented to Councilman Peter A. Napolitano. Thank you for your right here. I'd like to say I don't know what to say, but I do know what I want to say. Honestly, it's been a real pleasure leading the council this year. As many of you who have sat in the chair before have told me, this has been an exceptional year as far as a number of things coming at me. And as prepared as I thought I was coming into it, I had no idea how much extra work it would be. It's been a real pleasure doing it on behalf of you, my colleagues. And I'm looking forward to going back on the floor and being one of the voices. So Counsel Delisola, if you're fortunate to be, take the seat, bring a whip and a chair. You're gonna need it.
Four minutes left.
Yeah. Don't, don't.
One minute, actually, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Just remember, the meetings after midnight stopped after I made a motion to change the rules. The rules didn't change, but the late meetings did stop, and that was on your, on you guys doing a good job. But I'm, it's been a real pleasure. I've been extremely proud to work with each and every one of you. Most of you have served more than a dozen or more years, and it's been a great experience, and I look forward to continuing to serve as a side-by-side on the floor with you. Thank you. Yeah, you pick a night with no press, right? Jeez. Oh, I don't know about that. Mr. President? Oh, yeah, it's my fault. We've got audio late. Counsel Capone. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to suspend the rules and have a vote that we take legislative aid to cover as a clerk for the evening. I would, all in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. I ask, the clerk is not going to be available to make tonight's meeting due to, you know, the commitments of the Cattaldo family. Same with Councilman Piero, he won't be here tonight, and he's at the wake. And again, we off, I'm sure we sincerely offer Sir Hartfield, you know, condolences for them. All right, if.
Mr. President, can we make a motion to suspend the rules and take item number 20 off the calendar, please?
Yeah, I'll take a motion to open public participation. There is, all in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Ms. Clerk, do we have anybody on the list for public participation?
Mr. President, we do not at this time.
Second. All in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. You've closed public participation. Okay, there was a motion to take something out of, out of.
Item number 20 off the calendar.
Could you please repeat that into the microphone, please?
Sorry, can we take item number 20, suspend the rules and take item number 20 off the calendar, please?
Second. We have motion to take item number 20 off the calendar. All in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, I'm just gonna read on the sign sheet, but that's all right.
No, it's okay. They've motioned to jump over.
Mr. President, item number 20, an ordinance by Counsel Michael Marquez to amend by deleting section 27 inspection request before occupancy of Article III, certificate of habitability. This is, as we know, this has been on since May, and as we were looking to get some more information and maybe tweak it a little bit, but that's where we stand.
Counsel Marquez.
If I could, I'd like to also add Counsel Fred Capone as a co-sponsor of this ordinance.
We have a motion to add Counsel Capone. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Counsel Capone has done some, some work on it, and it's out here before he's all amended. A lot of these things are amended on there if you read through it. I think it's very fair, and it gives everybody the same amount of inspection power that you need for the piece as it reads. In the piece as it reads, go back again. An application fee is paid to inspect one apartment. That's what it says here. That's all it is. If there's any issue, the tenant has the right, obviously, to make a phone call and have an inspection. Or the landlord has the right, just as he has the right to have the vacant apartment inspected. And this is what it is. This is what the piece says. There's no thing about clothes piled up, things, those pictures they were trying to horrify us last week. I don't know what that was all about. There's nothing to do with this piece. And I'd like to spend my time to Counsel Capone, if he would like to add what he has done to this piece. It sounds pretty good.
Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to my colleague. So the inspection, we all know, is a very valid and useful mechanism. It will remain mandatory. Whenever there's a vacant unit, there will need to be an inspection. What we had put in here for the additional language is that we're trying to keep things separate, that if, if a unit is requested to be inspected, it's the unit in the common area that's inspected. And if there's any issues with that, so be it. If a tenant requests that ISD go into an apartment, what we did last meeting, we were saying that leave it up to the landlord's discretion. We've actually tweaked it a little bit. Both the owner and the tenant need to agree to have the ISD group go in, unless, of course, there's anything that presents any kind of immediate risk of serious harm. If there's an immediate risk of serious harm, it doesn't matter what anyone says. It needs to be reviewed. If, if the inspector sees things within the property that causes concern, and that concern would lead to a serious risk to the health and safety of the occupants of that building, it supersedes everything. So no one is looking to take anything away from them. What we are trying to do is, we're trying to set up guidelines that everyone knows exactly what they're in for, and if there's an issue that is less than an immediate harm or significant threat, then the tenant needs to make a phone call to City Hall themselves to set up their own inspection. We want to ensure that there isn't a piggybacking. And I think the other thing that's important for that is that if a tenant has an issue and a landlord is not addressing it, by contacting City Hall and lodging a complaint, a record is being established. I think it's important for all parties that there's certain protocol in place, that if we're looking at an inspection of a unit in the common areas, it should be an inspection of the unit in common areas. If there's anything along the way that causes concern of significant injury, absolutely. They have to pursue that and have to go and do that. But if there isn't anything that raises to that level of concern, then the tenant needs to make a formal complaint with City Hall and set up an inspection for their apartment separately. And that's what we're looking to do here. I don't know if the city solicitor is here, because we did, I did provide her with the language, and I asked her.
The clerk, the clerk had made me aware that our last meeting, we had requested feedback from.
Okay.
The prior chief, ISD, and city solicitor. So, you know, again, they're here in the audience.
Yeah, I think that's a good thing to do, have, if the assistant solicitor is here, we could just have them speak to it.
Have a motion to have the city solicitor come before. It's been seconded. All in favor? Opposed?
Good evening, members of the council.
Could you state your name for the record, please?
Keith Slattery, Assistant City Solicitor.
Thank you. Counsel Capone, you start the floor.
Thank you. Have you had a chance to look over the language?
I have.
Okay. There's a couple little tweaks. We made it since you got that one. It basically has both parties coming together. I understand that last time we were talking about it, the concern is the tenant is kind of the, you know, it's their domain, the apartment, while they're renting it. And what we're looking to do is, we're not looking to restrict them in any way, other than if it's a specific inspection for a unit vacancy. We just don't want them to dovetail together, looking to just try to keep those things separate, but at the same time, so therefore, they're not denied the right of having ISD come or any other department that they think is necessary. It's just we don't want it to dovetail on that inspection, because even though, I guess for convenience, that would work, I think for setting up some sort of a record, I think it would be important to have a separate call made by the tenant. The exception to that, the exception to that would be if there's anything, you know, the things that are circled have changed, and all it did is went from, it went from the landlord to a joint, landlord and tenant. But the concern is that if there's anything that poses any kind of a risk of immediate harm, ISD has carte blanche to address those issues. So that will always supersede anything. Just trying to set a separate protocol.
So I understand you want to set a separate protocol. The only real harm here is, as we all know, tenants' rights as occupiers are actually stronger even than landlords' rights.
Right.
So a landlord would need to give 24 hours notice to get into an apartment or court interaction or intervention. So the lines will start to blur from here, because now we're going to be using exigent circumstances as a reason to go in, and that's something that would need to be further defined.
Right.
And also, if a tenant, for any reason, wants to invite anyone into the space that they occupy, those rights are superior to anybody else's. So placing a condition that both would need to agree, I think, would still not be enforceable.
Right. And I didn't think that that would be much of an issue. It was adding the tenant in with the landlord. The reality is, what we're doing is, we're not looking to deny the tenant the opportunity or the right to have inspection of their unit. It's just not at the time of the vacancy. If the landlord has requested inspection of a vacant unit, and that's the sole purpose of the visit, it should stay consistent that that's the purpose of the visit. Common areas in the unit inspected. However, if anything rises to the level that there's a significant risk of serious injury, then the inspector can move forward, can go into the apartment. But let's say the tenant's saying, oh, my sink is dripping. You know, I've been talking to my landlord, and he hasn't fixed the dripping sink. You know, something like that, the tenant needs to make their contact, they have to set up their own inspection. No one's saying they can't do it, they absolutely have every right to do it, but that's not the type of issue that should be dealt with when an inspection has been requested to review a vacant apartment prior to renting it. And that's the concern that we have.
So whenever a request like that conflicts with higher law, then that conflict would, the rights, the conflict would supersede. So some of these tenants also might have a matter of convenience. Maybe they see that there are city officials on site, and this is the only time that they're home, or it's convenient for them to invite them in to take a look at a problem that is covered under the health and wellness statutes and the health code. So a minimum standard of living would be proper running water.
Yeah.
So I really think that they would still be within their rights to go in on the invite of the tenant.
As long as it was something that was justifiable, that's fine. We're not contesting that at all. It's just that if, if a tenant happens to be there, and unfortunately, there are good landlords, there are good tenants, there are bad landlords, there are bad tenants. And you could see a tenant trying to take advantage of this as an opportunity to kind of badge of the landlord. If it's a legitimate concern, if it's a safety concern, first and foremost, that supersedes everything, and I think that's in compliance with the state law. But if it's more of a nuisance thing, I think at that point, the tenant has absolutely every right to have the unit inspected, but I think it's on them to make their own effort to get their inspection. And just because someone happens to be in the area, you don't want them grabbing by the hand and pulling them into the unit. The other thing that it would do, from a landlord's point of view and the tenant's point of view, is it establishes that a complaint was made. So if you have a landlord who's not being responsive, if a inspector goes in, it doesn't necessarily show that a complaint was lodged, they just happen to be there. If a tenant had to make the contact because the landlord is not willing to do what they're supposed to do, then what happens is, you establish that there is a complaint, it gets inspected, and then the contact is made to the landlord, you need to correct A, B, C. I'm just trying not to blur the two at the same time.
And in the same time, we'd make a slippery slope. So there are tenants that are, that fear retribution. So sometimes they place these complaints anonymously.
Mm-hmm.
And we still respond to anonymous claims that are based in the health and safety or the welfare, the minimal standards that are outlined by the Massachusetts Codes for a habitable space. We also do have software called View and Force. I don't, are you familiar with that?
No.
So every complaint, whether it's in person or whether it's called in, is logged into the system.
So it will be a record.
There's a record. The complaint is outlined very well, and the action taken is also outlined very well. This is preserved on that property for the entire time, the entire history of the property. And again, it's tough to see any of the inspectors being invited in when the occupant of that property has a legal right to invite anyone in at any time.
Counselman, Counsel Capone, I've got two other speakers, plus the co-sponsor is waiting to speak as well. Are you finished?
Yeah, I understand the concern, so maybe what we need to do is see the, if you have the exact sites, we could take a look at it and see what we can do to maybe make it work.
I'd be glad to work in concert with any member of the council to try to come up with a situation that doesn't violate any superior law.
Okay.
And doesn't endanger, obviously, any residents of the city.
I was, I was hoping for that. It's not you, because I sent it to Colleen. I was hoping that we would have something written to be able to act on this evening, but I don't think we do.
Yeah, if someone asked for a written legal memo, we would have provided it. I didn't receive any such request.
Yeah, I had sent it to the solicitor.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, that's okay.
She's on vacation.
Yeah, okay, I appreciate you being here tonight. I appreciate your answers.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. President. My concern is, and I want to understand, if you go into a unit, okay, if I have a unit inspected, or anybody calls you, and you're on that, you're in that unit as the law stands right now, and you see people living in the basement, and you know that's an illegal apartment, does this stop you from going in?
It does not.
You can still go in?
Yes.
So you can still go into that illegal apartment, right? Because everything we're saying supersedes us. The state law supersedes you doing your job. So what do we need as far as? What are we claiming? The habitability, right now, you're going into it for habitability, you're inspecting the second floor apartment, you see there are people that are illegal in the basement, you can still go in?
Can I give you an example? Can I give you an example?
Yeah.
So let's say that the fire department and the ISD inspectors are going to a property, and they're going to inspect another call, but they see an air conditioner crammed into a basement window.
Right.
They know people are living there illegally. Now, usually, it's a member of the fire department or even the building inspector that would understand that immediately that's an uninhabitable and unsafe space, because there won't be any means of egress in cases of fire. And that is a condition where we would go in immediately. We would ask for permission.
And this would not, this would not stop you from going in?
It would not.
Okay. So my understanding is, and maybe the sponsor can explain it to me, what are we doing with this? What are we claiming? Because everything that it was said to begin with, you could still do.
To my mind, anytime we're invited, we're allowed in, and anytime there's any circumstance that.
But even if you're not invited, if I call, if somebody calls me, okay, and they tell me there's an illegal apartment as a city councilor, because they don't want to call the city, they're afraid or whatever, if I go by any house right now, and I think there's an illegal apartment, and I call you as a councilor, you're allowed to go in there to check it out?
Yes, and Chief Colleen could speak a little bit to the exigent circumstances. The fire department has broader control over the situation like this.
Right.
But even ISD, if they're not allowed in that evening, let's say somebody does block their entry, we just go to district court and get a warrant to get in. That might endanger lives, but that's the, eventually, if they, we feel like there's a life safety issue, we're going to get in and take a look.
Well, I want to make sure there's safety, safety for the fire department and safety for the firemen. So, but, so the point is that what's being said is harassing people. What do they mean by harassment? What, do you have anything on record?
I understand both sides. I've heard, working downstairs, I've heard it from both landlords and both tenants, but the goal of ISD and the goal of the fire department and the goal of the task force that enforces the codes, regulations, ordinances, state codes, state laws, is to keep everyone safe and to keep everyone in a healthy living situation.
Okay. My point is, if I own a single-family house, for example, okay, and I rent it out, and my tenant decides to rent out rooms, as a landlord, I don't know that. I mean, I go there, I collect the rent, everything looks good. Now, all of a sudden, ISD goes there, and they tell me I have an illegal apartment, which I didn't even know they were doing that. They're not going to pick on the landlord, they're just going to say to get rid of those, whoever's there. Is that correct? Because I know it's happened to someone I know.
That is correct, and they'll remedy the situations that make it an illegal rooming house.
Right.
There'll be locks on doors that will need to be removed. There'll be temporary wiring, which was one of the causes on Morris Street of the fire. When people are renting rooms, they're making makeshift kitchens. So they're running extension cords under rugs, through hallways, through holes in walls.
But you're contacting the landlord, and you're working with the landlord, because sometimes the landlord doesn't know. So it's not like you're going out there and finding the landlord $500 right away.
From the system in which we try to get noticed by even delivering fines or issuing a notice to correct, all the way through the appeals process, we try to work with everybody that is welcomed in every situation.
Okay. So I think that's all we're asking for, is for you to work with the landlords and work with the tenants also, because like you said, there's good tenants, there's bad tenants. There's good landlords, there's bad landlords. So as long as you're working with them, I don't see anything, why we have to add anything to the books. That's, I'm confused, is what I'm saying. And I will give the sponsor a reason to explain why he wants this on the books. All right, thank you.
Counsel Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've listened to everybody, okay, and they're all making a sense and everything, and I have my own ideas about it too, but I want to just note something that's on the agenda. And the agenda says to amend by deleting section 1027. If we delete 1027, everything is gone. So I'm saying there's something wrong with the agenda because of the fact that it says to delete section.
The information on the agenda is general information. The actual piece, which unfortunately, the clerk would be better suited to ask in very detail. The piece itself is, would be an amendment. To amend the piece, not delete it, and amended with this information. So someone will need to make that, make the correction.
You can't, you can't think any other way with, you know, what that means, when amended by deleting. No, no, I'm not talking about this. I'm talking about what's on the calendar. That's what we can vote on. Everything else doesn't mean anything until we straighten out what's on the, on the calendar. The what? Read 20, read, I don't want to get into a big iron ball, but read it. It says to amend the 27. Forget about everything else.
Clerk will read the, the actual piece before you. Go ahead.
The actual piece, to amend by deleting section 10-27.
That's fine, you don't have to go any farther. To amend by deleting 1027. How can you interpret that to mean anything else?
This is all, this is all.
No, don't read that. Read the calendar, the agenda. I'm sorry, the agenda. Huh? It should be to amend by, amend section 1027. I whatever it said. No, I'm waiting for an explanation.
No, as I said, this is, this is how it was presented, and you're absolutely correct. But unique, you know, it would need to be amended from the floor if you're looking to replace item, section 1027 with this following piece.
That's a new way of saying to amend it by deleting. It should have been just to amend it, but I'm sorry, I'm still believing that this is wrong on the calendar, and if we have to go by the calendar, then it's wrong. Everything is wrong.
Counsel, you're welcome to make the motion to remove the word deleting. We are amending, we would be amending. We are amending, we would be amending the piece with the piece that Counsel Capone had written.
No, I'm going to actually sit down and let someone else figure it out, because they're the people that are fighting for this, and let them do it the way they want to do it. But that's wrong. I want to point that out, that's wrong.
Counsel Markese. Excuse me, Counsel McKennan, then Counsel Markese.
I didn't mean what I said, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. President.
So I'm going to get a picture of you and me before the night's over, anyway. I'll frame you. I mean, I'll get you.
Yeah, no, this is a private guest. So we're making these appointments, it's you guys, you guys do a great job considering actually the court.
Thank you, Counsel.
Is this issue that we're speaking about, it seems like it's a, we're not making it broad, we're trying to narrow it down to one issue of the habitability inspection, correct?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And then the other, the other issue is, you don't want to limit ISD or fire, which we can anyway, because the state statute then actually protects them.
The state statute that protects tenants' rights.
They protect tenants' rights.
And it's case law, statute, code.
And that means that you guys, your very question, all this is doing right now, from what I can see, is it's saying that they want for habitability purposes a certificate, this to change, and one unit be inspected. So if they're on their inspection for that one unit, correct me if I'm wrong, but if they're inspection for one unit, and the tenant below says, oh, I want to check my unit out, by that means they can by state statute, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I don't know why we're fighting here about this, but it seems like, you know what I'm asking, you know what I'm trying to say? We're going one way, and we make the rules, we make the ordinance, that's our job. So you guys are the enforcement, we understand, we listen to what we say, so...
If you leave something open to too much interpretation, it will be interpreted, and at that point, it will probably lessen in the event of this being passed, the safety of residents and the property for the homeowner. So the best practices of the surrounding, every city that touches this city has the same exact ordinance. It's the best practice of all cities to have this ordinance.
How many cities right now in fact do you have this?
I can tell you that Malden, Medford, Revere, Chelsea, Saugus, Somerville has one that's very close to it, it's an occupancy permit, it's a little bit different, and the city of Boston has a similar program too.
I think what they're trying to do too is having this certificate of habitability with the landowner, as well as the patent, might actually be not a patent, because there is any issues that are wrong at that time. The landlord actually knows what's happening, wouldn't have, and if he tries to say that he doesn't, that's a bigger problem after that one. So he's still on hold for that, because now he's done that in front of you guys as well. If they're both notified by this government here, that they have to both be there for this to go down, if there's anything wrong, and they are negligent on it, whoever it may be, at that point, you have a record in that.
Well, it has another application. It has an application of protecting the landowner, because now they've got a certificate stating that their premises is habitable for occupation.
So that right there wouldn't be issued if there wasn't issue, correct?
No, it would not.
All right.
They would get a notice to correct, they would have to correct the issues, and then they would be issued upon correction of those issues, an occupancy permit.
Okay, so that's, I think that's where we're trying to put it. I mean, there was, you know, people who try to make issues, papers, and this and that, but we're not the bad guys. We make the rules. You guys enforce them. We're listening to you how to enforce it, but we need you to listen to us with what we're trying to prove. So, I mean, I think feedback that we've been trying to get here, and I think my two colleagues and many more that have been at Legislative Affairs now, almost six months now, doing that. So it needs to, at some point, come to an end, you know, and happy endings, so that we can actually get this going, or we may have what we need to do. So it's fair and equitable for everybody to fall, because if you do that, I think that's a good...
Well, like Counsel Capone had said, he either is asking or has asked for a memo. I would be glad to look into that and supply one, and given that's the holidays, maybe more than two weeks, but that's, if Counsel Capone wants to reach out, I will...
How many times is this, I just need a quick question. Who's the chair, two of my colleagues, how many times have this been? We have changed...
What's the original date of the piece?
May 29th. It was referred to Legislative Affairs.
Let me answer the question.
Oh, sorry.
Actually, it's not your place to do that. There's another speaker, another member who has not spoken yet, and the sponsor, the other place...
I can't use my remaining time?
You've got to go things in order. No, no, he definitely has a place, time to speak, but Counsel Markese, who's already spoke once, has been waiting to speak again, to have somebody who spoke after him speak ahead of him would not be appropriate. And there's still one member who hasn't spoken at all.
So what I'll do is I'll ask a question.
Well, let's finish getting the answer that you asked. So was it in May, how many times, how long was it in committee?
It was in May 29th, it was referred to Legislative Affairs. It was in committee all the ways and through September, and then actually up until September 24th, and then October 9th, it came out, it was favorable action, then you had the, you know, the, what do you call it, the, you know, bring it back, whatever, reconsideration and so forth. And almost every week, it's been, the 11th, on the 13th, it was postponed, on the 26th of November was postponed, and then on December 10th, it was referred back for response back from the solicitor in ISD, and also Counsel Capone, who's done a lot of work on this, was going to try to, you know, like I said, what she did provide there tonight.
All right, and just for clarification, the chair as well, could we have the piece read that's trying to change tonight?
Yes.
Because there was a debate on whether to amend it or not. Do we need to amend it, or do we need to go over?
It says exactly, "An ordinance by Counsel Michael Markese to amend by deleting Section 27 inspection requests before occupancy of Article III Certificate of Habitability." The only thing is, is that originally, and maybe this wasn't caught at the time, is to amend, instead of amend by deleting, to amend Section 27, because I think that's what you were looking to do the whole time, if I'm not mistaken.
But now that, that whole piece right there, which was amended, or is being amended...
Yeah, nothing's been, nothing's actually stolen yet.
Right, so once we do that, then...
All right.
So the proper motion would be, again, to remove the word delete from the, from the item first, and then make your motion if you're going to look to replace this and make the following amendments. Okay. Counsel McGlaughlin, then Counsel Markese, then Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, quickly, I'm a little confused, to be truthful. We've been here a long time, and I think we're going around in a circle for something that's not necessary to be truthful. If state supersedes what we're trying to do, then why are we even discussing this matter? Counsel Capone, I'd yield the floor to him to ask him the question, is what are we hoping to be able to get out of this piece that is different than what we're doing today? Do we not go to a unit to inspect one unit per time, or are they...
Counselman, if I could clarify your, if I could clarify and answer your question, very simple. The piece before you is to amend the inspection request. What the state supersedes has to do with what the authority of ISD has to be able to go in and inspect issues, okay? It does not, the state does not give them the authority to go ahead and create inspection certificates. It's what empowers them to do their job when they're on the property doing the inspection. Do I have that correct?
It seems to focus on consent and allowing into dwelling spaces, and who has that authority? That's what it seems to break down to for me. And if, just to expand, requiring that both, the one that occupies and owns, has to allow this entry at the time that they're on the property would seem to be unenforceable to me.
Would be unenforceable to you, Solicitor.
Yes.
That's for the certificate?
It's for when they're there inspecting for a habitability certificate, but then in the supposition that was placed on the floor, where a tenant underneath had said, "Come on in and look at a problem I have in my property," at any occupier, any occupier of a space or property has paramount legal rights. So...
Then again, again, I go back to my original statement, and I want to support my good colleague, Counsel Markese and Counsel Capone, but I'm not sure why, what we're trying to change, if the state supersedes anything that is within our powers, are we really, are we really batting our heads against the wall for no reason? And that's really my statement.
Counsel Markese.
First, I'd like to amend this, if I could amend this ordinance, like to make a motion to amend by deleting, by deleting, the two words by deleting, so it reads, "To amend Section 10-27..."
By eliminating...
Excuse me? Your motion is, your motion is to remove the words "to delete" from the item.
By deleting, it says by deleting.
Mm-hmm, by deleting.
Inspection requests before occupancy of Article, Certificate of Habit...
Just a clarification for the public, you're just looking to remove the words "by deleting."
Yes, that's all it was intended to be.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
In the second, in the last time that I say it, the owner must request a legal use for $25, I pay for inspection of one apartment that will be clean. Two weeks ago, some guy threw these pitches out of 10 feet of clothing and stuff, I don't understand it. If I'm a landlord, and I'm having my apartment clean, you rest assured that those other two apartments aren't all that bad. He wouldn't let you in the house unless the place was clean. He's providing a clean apartment for somebody. So this request, and I have no problem with this, for $25, you have an inspection of one apartment, and maybe up the stairs or down the stairs. That's what this is saying, and that's all I'm saying. It's not a problem, that's what it is. If they wanted to change this, that $25, we can ram sack their house, which they have the permission to do, unless we put some teeth in it, and B, the landlord wants to go to court, give him something. Says, "Look what this says, one apartment, they ran through my house." No one's going to be dragging you in the house if the house is a mess inside.
One second.
Let's be serious about this. And that's all this is. The people of it deserve some protection. The cities would run roughshod over this, and whatever it is, it's not creating an unsanitary, unsafety place. If there's a problem in the apartment, I'm sure that tenant would have called up long before he saw bodies walking through it to complain about it. I've been in the business my whole life, apartments always been clean, everything that was inspected, sometimes it's not inspected when it goes back 15 years, but we won't get into that. But everybody deserves protection. Come in, you look at my one unit, is what it says. Doesn't say the house. I mean, they have a blanket policy that the minute they open the door, they can walk through the whole house. The damn police don't have as much power as this. They come in there to a search warrant, they don't go through the whole house, they have apartment three, they look at apartment three. Unless there's additional search warrants to go through the rest of the house, I'm pretty sure that's what they need. So let's read this for what it is. It's one apartment, and it stares up and down. That's all it is. And that's all I'm trying to say here. They can still do their inspections, if your landlord, if the tenant has a problem, he'll call up for an inspection. I mean, I don't think a guy's going to throw $20,000 at an apartment to clean it up and have two filthy apartments below. That's just my take on it. That's what I do. And that's all I'll say on it.
Counsel Capone.
I was just going to answer what was asked, but what I would do, we've got our guest here, I do think that it's important to get your city solicitor's opinion on any ordinance that goes forward. I'd ask my co-sponsor if he's willing to do so, just to, we'll hold on it one more time. In all fairness, the only thing that we were debating for a long time was whether it was going to be voluntary or involuntary, and the language of these amendments just came up recently. So we did, I did refer to the solicitor's office. I am a little disappointed that we don't have a response this evening. It is what it is, but we've got the assistant solicitor who's willing to work on it, and what I'd be looking for is, you don't have to do a full-blown memo, you understand what we're looking to do, I understand the state laws, if there's some way to view it, and maybe if there's a tweaking of language that you see would comply with state law, that's really what I'm interested in. And what we're looking to do is, we're not looking to bind anyone's hands by any means, and we definitely don't want to compromise safety, because that's paramount. What we want to do is, we're looking to have an inspection of a unit be simply that. Inspection of the unit, common areas. If there is something that does rise to a level that there's going to be a serious injury, absolutely, you need to address it there and then on the spot, regardless of who says what. But if it's a minor issue, if it's not something that really is a health issue, I really do think that the tenant should be creating their own paper trail, they should be making their own contact. And I do appreciate the fact that some tenants are afraid, and they don't want to reach out, but if you have the body there, but at the end of the day, the landlord's going to know that the tenant puts you in there anyway if there's an issue with it. So I just want to keep those two things separate. A separate inspection of common areas and apartments, and then if there's an issue that a tenant has that does not rise to the level of any significant harm, let them set up their own inspection, and then inspect and go through and look at the whole unit from top to bottom. So no one's restricting the tenant at all. So that's what we're looking to do, but if you could get something back to us along those lines, that's all I'm looking for. Sure, sure. I appreciate it. I don't have any other questions, I don't know if any of my colleagues do.
Counsel McKennan? Counselman DeFlorio?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay.
Excuse customary thanks.
And just before, we have motion for favorable action, I have a second. Second. Before I take the roll, one second, Counselman. Counsel McGlaughlin, I just want to, the reason why I couldn't take your motion to call for the question was, without a motion, there was no question to call. There has to be a motion on the floor for calling for the question, close the debate so we can vote on the point. There was no motion made. Counselman Semenelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
On the motion.
On the motion.
On the motion.
On the motion, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for, on behalf of Counselman Semenelli, can we invite the chief up for a question, a series of questions?
Like the chief to come up? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? The aye has it? Chief, if you could just state your name for the record.
Fire Chief Anthony Colley.
Gentlemen, we have a guest before us. Thank you. Counsel Semenelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask the chief, what is his opinion of the new changes? This is the individual that's responsible for this, it'd be nice to have a word or two on what he thinks about what we're proposing.
Chief, have you had a chance to read the changes that were presented?
I haven't read the most recent changes, I could take a quick look at them. I think there's been some confusion with these inspections, and Solicitor Slattery kind of alluded to it. Under Chapter 148, which is the fire code of Massachusetts, we're allowed to enter any premises if we believe there's a danger of life or property, under the fire code for fire safety reasons. The habitability is quite different than that. This is a pre-scheduled inspection. So if somebody were to call our office, or even call any of you, and you say there's an illegal basement apartment, we investigate that under Chapter 148. The habitability is also a very important tool, as we all know with this. My concern, and I think I could speak for the building department in ISD as well, was when it became mandatory versus voluntary, and we want to keep it mandatory. So these latest changes, I haven't looked to them. I can give you my personal opinion or professional opinion on the matter, as far as I'm concerned, if my members are at a property, and we're looking under Chapter 148 for types of inspections, we're looking everywhere for fire safety violations. We never want to say we were at that house earlier today, we were at that house last week. It's something we could have prevented that. It's something, we could have prevented that. So, when we say we want to leave, if it's a relatively minor thing, I don't know if you're ever gonna get one of my fire lieutenants either on a piece of apparatus or the ones in fire prevention to walk away blindly. We take everything seriously because we know minor problems can lead to larger problems. But we look forward to giving our input with this before it gets to the point. I appreciate everybody here taking the interest in these types of ordinance, because they do make it stronger. And I don't want to make it seem that we just stand by our state codes. Our ordinances are strong for a reason, and it's everybody here. So, we want to work with you guys to make sure that we have the right laws and the ordinances to help protect our firefighters. I have tonight would be Scott Darin, who we all know was severely, severely injured. He had his last surgery today, and, you know, he's evident to what can happen when things aren't maintained in this city.
With the city solicitor writing, would it be appropriate to have that included with the chief's recommendations on the new changes?
But I think it's important to recognize, like, under chapter 148, that's not our habitability permit. And we, we take that authority very seriously. We, when somebody calls us with that, we investigate them thoroughly, but we're not kicking in doors, we're not doing that type of stuff, but we want to ensure the safety. And fire code and fires start from very different reasons, and we take our investigations very seriously to make sure these people and my members are safe going into these properties. The habitability is just another one of those steps that we can do that. We're letting ISD members go in there and take a quick look around. And I definitely understand what Councilman Markazie is saying, that you don't just want to turn a place inside out. And I've spoke on this matter, I think the last meeting or the meeting before, is that my office has seen a decrease in complaints by tenants and landlords because of this habitability. I think it's a great tool that we use here, and we all know that there's still those illegal basement apartments, those illegal units, illegal build-outs, and we're finding them through the habitability, more so through my fire code. So, it's definitely a tool that's benefited this city.
Councilman McKenon.
Will you, Mr. President, to the chief?
Do you, chief?
We've been doing this for a while now. Do you agree there's two different issues here? You have your state statutes, that you could do whatever you choose to do with, doesn't matter, and then you have your habitability statute. I think all the council people here that are working on this are asking for is, when it's time for an inspection for $25, that they're paying, they would like to be there with the tenant to go through the building with you, or go through that unit. I mean, what are we saying then? I mean, you're saying, that's not good. That's what you're saying. I mean, we're looking at a habitability certification for one apartment so they can move in, right? So, at that point, why would you go through the whole house then?
So, my understanding of this, the question that I-
I mean, I'm just trying to get it out there.
No, I understand, council.
You know what I mean? Reason being is because it was reported in the papers, like, we were trying to be the bad guys, and we're not.
Yeah.
And that's not correct, and they should never be doing that. No one should be doing that to this body.
Absolutely. So, from, the conversations I'm catching tonight is, you have a scenario, a landlord calls for unit three to be inspected, it's empty, it's cleaned, it's painted, it has the smoke detectors, everything's good. As my guys are leaving, or as ISD members are leaving, unit two says, "Hey, can you take a look at this?"
They can.
My toilet's leaking.
They can, by state statute, they can. If they, I-
Not if I called.
And my question is this, okay. So, you just explained it perfectly for the first part. The second part is this, if another human comes out and says, "I want my property inspected", this unit right here, you can do it, by state statute.
Under chapter 148, or under the habitability that we're trying to change?
Doesn't matter, whatever one you want to choose.
Because you didn't listen to my whole scenario, council.
Okay, I'm sorry.
What I said was, unit two comes out and says-
I will listen now.
"I have a leaky toilet, and it won't stop leaking." My guys under chapter 148, a leaky toilet isn't gonna start a fire unless it goes into electrical, we're not gonna go down that rabbit hole. Under this, in the conversations I'm hearing, the ISD inspectors are now gonna say, "Call the office, we'll be back for that." Right? They're not gonna go in and say, "You're right, it is leaking, I have the landlord's cellphone number, I can give him a call and have him fix it right now." We're not gonna go that route. We're gonna leave the leaky toilet, have them call, we're gonna have our resources leave, we're gonna have them schedule it and say, "We'll be back on Thursday," and they're gonna say, "Well, wait a second, the toilet's still leaking, it's Monday." Well, that's our next available appointment, so it's gonna leak for four days, and then we're gonna come back and say, "Okay, now that you scheduled the appointment." That's what I'm following from these, from this conversation.
Yeah, but my, my thing, okay, chief, but-
Because we don't want it to seem-
On the flip side of that.
No, no, wait. We don't want it to seem that we're barging indoors. Now, we didn't bargain in unit two.
They asked to come in.
Somebody said, "Hey, I have a quick thing." Now, I know all of you-
And are your guys plumbers?
No, they're not plumbers.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
And what I'm saying is, our inspectors aren't electricians, aren't plumbers, aren't builders, none of them are. They're trained to inspect and say, "Hey, let me give the guy a call, I just had a relationship with him on unit three."
Sure.
Every one of you here, I've had a personal relationship and professional relationship as far as, "Hey, can you go take a look at this, you can call and do this." We've all done that together, right? We want to be constituent-heavy, we want to help these people. I think we're bargaining it down with something like this. I get what you're saying, I just don't think there's a persona of us kicking through doors and these men and women that are in our ISD department going, "Hey, we want to look at this, and we want to go see that." There's a unit that's being, that was scheduled, they're not gonna charge them another $25 for that unit, they're not gonna say, "Hey, this was another habitability," they're gonna say, "Hey, we stopped a leak from damaging unit one and displacing three people." So, that's what we're doing. But it is completely, to answer your question, it is completely different from chapter 148. We don't just walk around and say, "Hey, chapter 148, this is what we're gonna do."
I just, yeah, that's what I wanted, I wanted to, there is two different things going on here, though.
Oh, they're definitely, well, I think there's some confusion because they know that we have a great authority as far as inspection, but we don't use that with the habitability side.
That's why I'm asking.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, as there's no more speakers, right now you have one motion in front of you, which was for favorable action. Excuse for the customary thanks, thank you for coming up. One second. According to clerk, let's get, let's get this piece directed. The motion made was for favorable action and seconded. That's all you have in front of you right now. If someone prefers to have it sent to city solicitor review, you need to make the motion.
I think, I think we need that.
Are you making that?
And then-
One second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. You've sent that piece to the, to city solicitor. Clerk will read the next item, or if there's something on the, on the check, on the list.
Mr. Cameron.
All right.
Item number 22, Mr. President.
The next item we have on the signing list is item number 22, I'll entertain a motion to entertain item number 22. Make it in the form of a motion, please. There's been no motions made, what? Spend the rules, take item number 21 and 22 collectively. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Councilman Del Sol, if you take.
Mr. President, item number 21, it's a resolution offered by Councilman Weymatuski that a representative from National Grid appear at the next council meeting to discuss excessive, excuse me, excessive robocalls from National Grid to Everett residents. And item number 22 is a resolution offered by Council Peter A. Napolitano, who's president, that Dan Cameron from National Grid appear at the last meeting of December 2018 to provide an update on the streetlight replacements discussed in committee this fall, as well as progress on the issue of double poles.
Want to just state your name for the records?
Good evening, Dan Cameron from National Grid, with offices at 170 Metford Street in Malden.
Councilman Weymatuski.
Thank you, Mr. President, excuse me. And Mr. Cameron, I want to thank you, you're a frequent guest at our meetings for a good cause, but is your company aware that robocalls are going out, numerous phone calls daily? My own house, I got three in one day, saying they're from National Grid with all these incidental, and of course, the caller ID says it's Bill Rico Lowell, I even got the Commonwealth of Mass. What is the story with these robocalls with your company? Are you aware that, are they your company, or is it some renegade outfit?
We are aware of this, and the best way I can explain it is, it is not National Grid that is making these calls. The one thing we have to understand is, that in the world of electricity, there's three parts to it, and we control two of them, and one of them is unregulated, that's what we call the generation end. And these companies do have access to database where they are allowed to market their services. We do have a process where those calls can be, you know, a customer can call our customer service center and have any of those calls blocked from what we call suppliers, all right? So, they, if they are, if they do want to call the, you know, the main number, which is 1-800-322-3223, they can ask to have a block put on all suppliers, and that should limit, you know, these calls getting through to these residents, but it-
Are you receiving complaints from other communities, or?
We have, I've received a number of calls myself, and we are aware of this.
You know, you're here on several different issues. This one here, we have a large population of senior citizens, they're not even answering their phone anymore, because somebody calls up and says, "They're National Grid," and now you're telling us that, I know you're having a public relations problem with the lockout and all that good stuff. The trees in the city have been butchered by either Comcast or National Grid, they've killed hundreds of trees in this city, they destroyed them. We've got double pole problems, you know, I'm very disappointed, I'll be honest with you. You know, Mass Electric is what most of us grew up with, and they were a kind and gentle company. But moving forward, don't you think it'd be nice if your company took an ad out in our papers here in Everett, and suggested that it's not your company, and be careful who you give information to over the phone?
It's a good point, yeah. It's important to know that this, you know, these calls are not coming from Mass, I mean, from National Grid employees at all. They're, again, it's the unregulated side of the business where they do have access to databases and so forth, but that can be limited.
Yeah, but they have personal information, who's paying their bill on time, who's not paying the bill. I mean, where are they getting this, from your company? Are you allowed to give them this information?
Certain information they can have access to, that is correct, and that's out of our control, councillor.
Well, you know, your name is being used. If I owned a company or worked for a company that was annoying people on a regular basis, I'd be quite concerned about it, but my five minutes is up. But I want to come back to you after the co-sponsor and another piece, and I've got to get to the bottom of these, who's trimming the trees in the city, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councilman Napolitano.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Cameron. Just alongside something that Councilman Weymatuski was asking, I realize you said no National Grid employees are making the calls. Is National Grid working any third-party marketing through other sources where they're, they would be using information and using the National Grid name in these phone calls?
No, no.
Okay. All right, that's, I just want, I just wanted to make sure, I work with a lot of third parties, I just want to make sure that that wasn't, that question was fully answered. You came before us in the fall regarding the sheer number of lights that are out in the city. You know, I'm not sure if you've received any feedback, but pretty much every one of your representatives have come up before us for permitting, for, you know, for permit, has endured the displeasure of the council regarding the lights issue and the double poles issue. Can you give us an update on the information provided us in October? We really didn't leave anything for you to be able to come back and provide us any information, and I'd like to get an idea of, because the streets I've been monitoring, I don't see any activity. I'm just wondering, how are we, how are we doing with the replacing the streetlights that are out?
Okay. I'm surprised you haven't seen any of the activity, but we've been working closely with the city with the 3-1-1 system, and since the end of October, we have repaired, and I have a list here, about 175 lights within the city. The, and that does include lights that are on the DCR parkways, you know, like we have each parkway. Myself, I also did an audit of all the main streets, which would include Broadway, Main Street, Chelsea Street, and Norwood Street and Main Street, and we did find about 35 lights out in those streets. All but 10 have been repaired, and those 10 have underground problems, because those streets are where the electric feed is underground, and so we know that the problem is more extensive, and they'll need, you know, additional attention. So, we are aware of those, we will be working those over the, over the next several weeks.
There, right now, there were more than 10 lights between the intersection of Ferry Street and Chelsea Street and Glendale Square. There are more than 10 lights out in that, that stretch of Ferry Street, there were more than that many lights out in the fall, there, none of those lights have been repaired. Okay, that's, that's a street that I frequently drive down, as do most of the membership here. None of those lights have been repaired, and I don't see any of the activity on Main Street repair either. I'm not calling the question, but it's getting frustrating because out of 175 lights repaired, how many lights are you showing to be out? Still unrepairable?
Right now, of the, of the original list that both we had in the 3-1-1 system, it was, it was extensive, and all but about six or seven were repaired, and included in that six or seven were ones that had underground problems.
What was that total that was extensive?
It was up around 200 in that, in that vicinity, you know, between our list and the list we got from, from the 3-1-1 system. But I would, council, I'd be glad to discuss, because I personally did an audit myself, and drove all of those streets two weeks ago. So, unless these lights have gone out in the last two weeks, and I also have, you know, information from our people that those lights that were out, all but 10, have been repaired.
I have lights out on both sides of a major intersection on Ferry Street, which turns into a blind street because of the buildings on each side here. Those lights have been out for over a year and a half, and, and those numbers have been reported multiple times, no effort, no change. It's been discussed up here, the numbers have been provided through here, they're still out. And until somebody turns that corner and has a head-on collision because they don't see that somebody's coming in, in all seriousness, my Christmas lights at that intersection are brighter than your streetlights.
Okay.
And I'm not trying to be funny, but the fact is, if you go down Cottage Street, you'll find that I'm not exaggerating. So, I mean, this is the problem, is that, you know, we have people coming up here asking for these permits, the membership is tired of what they feel to be a total inaction on this, both in the double poles and the lights, and it's coming to the point where I believe there are members here who are willing to vote on a moratorium. That's ridiculous, we shouldn't be having to consider that. But this is, issue's been going on all year, and as far as the poles goes, it's been going on for several. And at what point do we say enough is enough?
Well, I'd be glad to, like I said, I have the list here of those 10 lights, but we'd be glad to do another audit. I mean, I'm sure the ones with underground problems are the ones that you're looking at are included in that list, and I'd be glad to go over that with you. But we'll certainly do another audit of those streets, but like I said, we, I was involved in it, and actually, I drove part of Broadway before I got over here, and I know a number of them were fixed.
There are more than 10 on Broadway alone, and I was talking about Ferry Street before, so clearly there's, there's more than that.
All right.
Thank you, councillor. Councilor Florio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand those calls that are going out are not coming from National Grid, and I do understand about a third party using your name, so how about putting something in the people's bills stating that that's not you, letting people know that that's not you, it's a third party, and it has nothing to do with National Grid?
That's a good suggestion.
Because I'm sure you can afford to do that with all the lights that you haven't changed all in, through the years, so.
I, that is a good suggestion. I don't, this, this activity clearly has increased over the last few months, because I've, I've gotten a lot of calls.
And we do understand that it's not National Grid.
Right, and the company is working on some sort of response, getting the message out to, out to customers.
Yeah, so if you, if you send the message out to a customer, not, I wouldn't even do a robocall, because a lot of people don't answer the robocalls. I would actually put it into an envelope with their bill, stating that whatever call you're getting, it is not National Grid, that it's a third party, just, you know, a small note, and I think that would cover everybody. And if they don't read it, then they don't read it, but at least you cover your bases. So, that's my recommendation, if that's possible, we would appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councilor Hanlon.
Mr. Chairman, that's exactly what I was gonna say, that Councilman DeFlorio said. The only, the only thing is, I want, I want everybody to know that it is not the National Grid that's making these phone calls, and what it is, it's the company that is selling electricity. Now, they buy the electricity from the National Grid, a large amount, and they get a discount for it, and they turn it around, they sell that amount back to the homeowners at a discount that they've, they're giving them, and that's making it seem like you're getting a discount from the National Grid, and you're not. You're getting a discount from this other company that bought, what, that bought the service. And the one thing that they'll say to you is, "Hi, this is Lillian Gibbs, and we're letting you know that your bill from the National Grid is above reproach, and you have excellent credit, and then that, and because you're such a good customer, we're gonna credit, and then that, and because you're such a good customer, we're going to offer you a discount in your electric rates. Now, National Grid is not doing that. They're often from their own grids, so that, that's what I want to say, so people notice that. But Rose's idea of putting that thing in the envelope is, you know, you don't have to say it's from you, you have to say it's strange company, is, has, is, they're making you think that you're buying a discount from National Grid, and you're not. I mean, you can say it a nicer way than that, you know, but that's the truth, they're not doing that. So, thank you very much, and that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Semenelli.
Mr. Chairman, through you to, for Councilman Semenelli. Mr. Cameron, you've been coming up here for over a year now, I believe, is that so?
More than a year, yes.
More than a year. And I don't usually speak for other council members, especially for our council president, but believe me, you're looking at 3-1-1. He's talking about an intersection that is blinding, that may cause an accident, of which the council president of the city of Everett lives in. He's been telling you for more than a year, and it's not fixed. There's a problem there with your company, because you're not believing that the council will put a moratorium, and we won't let you in here. It's almost unfathomable, Mr. President, Mr. Chairman, that the company representative doesn't take notes as the council members are dictating to him different street apparatus, lightings that need to be fixed. He has before him numbers that he says he saw before he come to the meeting and weeks before, writing down what lights that were not illuminated are now illuminated, and the council members are saying, no, that's not true. I can't believe it, Mr. Cameron. Either you're incompetent with your job, or you're not providing the information for the facility managers that need to take care of all that. You should work on it very, very diligently. Try to get something done nearly immediately for Council President Appolitano's intersection before there's a serious, serious accident.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Florio.
Mr. Cameron, I, on a different note, you sell electricity to these companies, right, at a lower rate? Is that, I'm, I'm, I want to understand something.
No, no. The way it works is, like I said, there's, there's three parts to electricity. There's transmission, there's distribution, that's what National Grid controls. So we own the wires and the poles and the manholes and everything in the street. The physical product, the electricity, comes from generation plants. You happen to have one here in Everett. We do not own that, we don't own the product, all right? We deliver that product on behalf of those generation companies. That is the part that's, that is unregulated, okay? And you, any customer can choose who they want their supplier to be. So, for instance, if you are quite concerned about the environment, which a lot of people are, you could, on paper, buy all your power from a renewable source, like a, like hydroelectric power, or for wind power, solar power. You could actually physically do that on paper. So your piece of the grid is coming from a renewable source. Other people do not want to get involved in that, and they just choose to purchase basic service, which National Grid would do on your behalf. We go out to bid on residential, residential customers, we go out to bid every six months, we take the lowest price, that's confirmed by the Department of Public Utilities, and that's what is included on your bill, and you'll see it at the bottom, it says basic service.
Right.
But if you have your own supplier, you know, XYZ Green Power Company, that would be the line item on the bill, and you would be paying whatever price you contracted with that company.
Right. But you're, you're not selling the electricity to these people?
No, it's a pass-through.
I didn't think so, I just wanted to clarify that.
It's just a pass-through. But, as Counselor Hanlon said, these, and we are aware that companies are out there, they open the conversation by saying, you are a very good National Grid customer, and now they want to sell you, and they, and they might want to even sell you additional services, you know, energy conservation services.
But why are they allowed to use your name? Is that legal?
That's a good question.
I mean, I, I, this is something that I really want to look into, because if someone, your na, your National Grid, that's your name, okay? These people are using your name, so I don't think that's legal. I mean, I don't feel it's legal, so why isn't National Grid doing something about? You know, I feel very bad that you come here, you're really a nice person, and we take it out with you all the time, but you are the, you are, you do represent National Grid. And I, I feel bad for you, I wish you had a different job.
I'm fine.
We're not, we're not for National Grid.
It's, it's a very valid point, and all I can say is, the company, again, this activity has significantly increased recently, so we are working to get a message out. I'm sure we're working with the Attorney General's office, and just, just as, you know, on occasion, unfortunately, people go the imposter room and pretend that they're National Grid employees showing up at your home of business, so it is something I will take back.
Because when these people are using your name, they come into your house and they're saying National Grid, it sounds like you're sending them. So I really think you should go to the Attorney General, something needs to be done. Maybe we should refer something to the Attorney General on these calls.
Well, certainly, be glad to take this back, and any policy decisions.
I would like a feedback, I would like an answer back on that, please. All right? I really would. They're using your name, and I want to know why they're using your name. And if National Grid is not allowing them to use your name, then I will take a different step to that. Thank you.
Counselor Matusky.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, and I agree with Councilwoman DeFlorio, you are a nice person, I've known you for many, many years, but we've got four issues here. We've got the butchering of our trees. You, do you have anything on that?
I have rollovers.
Tree trimming is something that National Grid has to...
All right. I only have five minutes left here, so I want to make this quick. Whoever's been trimming the trees for the last few years that butchered our trees in the city. You've got three main branches, the middle one, it's not even a tree, and most of them die because they've been butchered, okay? And I've seen these fluorescent trucks come down the street, they're either green or red, and they got, I said, who, you don't work for the city, who are you people? They'll be the Comcast or National Grid sent them out to trim the trees, the wires are in the middle. That's number one. I want an answer from you, from you, with, I'm going to lay this on the table, by the way. And I hope you take an advertisement out in our local papers informing the residents of Everett that we are not part of this robocall situation. And the councilman that brought up Ferry Street, I drove here this evening and I went by, it was like, I thought I was having a senior moment, it was very dark. There's at least 12 lights out from Chelsea Street to Union Street, and it's pathetic, and it's been like that for months. You're not writing it down, Mr. Cameron. I want them fixed by the, two weeks from now. And we've been nice to you, and the mayor's office is supposed to coordinate some efforts, we have a city worker back charge you people. Let's get on the ball, you fixed Revere Beach Parkway, over 62 lights were out, you did a good job there, maybe that's because it was the state. But we want some results here. When I'm playing tiddlywinks here with you, this is unbelievable. This company has become a corporate nightmare, not to mention what they're doing to these locked-down workers for months on end. It's a creep, excuse me, we've got a heckler in the background here. Sir? Yeah. At any rate, it's starting to get aggravating, okay? I've got more important things to work with. Fix the lights, get the trees trimmed correctly, and put some advertisement in the papers so the city of Everett knows not that you're not responsible. Three calls in one day to my house? People are tripping over wires to get to the phone, it's ridiculous! And you blame it on, well, it's part of the new law now. Your company is creepy. I want some results. I want to know what you're going to do. You know what we want. We want a report on the tree trimming. We want a report on how many lights you're fixing. And we want a report on this robocall, I want advertisements in our paper. Can you do that?
I'm sure we can come up with a policy to address the situation. I'm not sure to include ads in the local paper, but I will.
It's ridiculous, come on. Your company has become creepy and it's a monster. And we all need electricity, so you got us over a barrel here. And there's only one major company, it's you. Mass Electric, you remember, that used to come up here, was a nice deal. But your company's creepy now. And I want to know what the city is doing. We have the mayor's chief of staff here, I'd like to ask him. We were supposed to resolve this, somebody from the city was supposed to, and they want to put a commit, a blue ribbon committee to fix streetlights. Get out, come on! It's like a third-world country up here now. Let's get on the ball here. What are we, chopped liver?
As I said, Counsel, I think we've made...
Nah, you haven't made any progress. You did a good job on the Parkway. Mr. Cameron, please. Come on, stop blowing the hot air here. You know, and it's terrible, we have aides up here that are doing paperwork, it's creepy. And he's, sir, he's doing the five-minute rule in the back, but I don't need hecklers here in this chamber. If they don't like it, leave the room.
You all set, Counselor? Counselor Leo McKinnon.
Thank you.
I won't forget you.
Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. Just, Mr. Cameron, how long you been coming up, how long you been in this position?
Well, a few years.
How many, about? Over 10, 20?
Yeah.
At least 20?
Yes.
Okay. Because I remember you when I first started.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's why I can see you on the outside, and I can say, hey, when you're filling up your gas tank, it's me, hey, how you doing? Right? But you can see the frustration now.
Yes.
Moratorium was discussed. If we do that, that would be an action that would not be feasible to your company. So, and I don't know if we would have enough councilmen that would actually get on board with it, so we need to discuss it at that, you know, certain point. I know that the double poles have always been an issue, we've created a committee on this thing because of that. That's wasting our time on one, you know, on one item, and it's your company. So you could feel the frustration, you know? Double poles, the lighting, a dark city is an unsafe city. We don't want to be an unsafe city. If we're dark anywhere in our city right now, it becomes unsafe.
Yeah.
There's more crime, it's statistically correct, I know, because of the, you know, things that I do sometimes, yeah. So, when are we going to get, and when can you tell us definitively, when are we going to have relief of those items right there? Because I, I know, and why I'm asking is because I've been here almost as long as you've been coming up here, so that's why I'm asking. And it's always, it's sort of like always progressively getting worse and worse and worse, like the lights are out, or, you know, the poles are doubled up, or whatever. So, do we have a definitive answer of when this is going to happen?
Well, again, I think, I mean, I'm, I'm not lying here, I'm telling you that we have fixed over 175 lights in the last, albeit, that was a very high number, all right? But we have fixed over 175 on the main streets. I'd be certainly glad to go back out and, I don't think we missed any, but as Mr. Appolitano said, he's, he thinks the numbers, at least on the main streets, are not accurate. I'd be glad, as early as tomorrow, tomorrow night, to go back out, but as of two weeks ago, we were down to, well, then last week, actually, two weeks ago is when the audit was done, we're down to 10 on those main streets. I will absolutely, I promise you, we'll go back out and do it. Now, some of them have underground problems, we know that. You know, they're going to involve digging the street, you know? The conduits get crushed by other parties and so forth. So, they are all being investigated one by one, all right? They're probably going to take some additional time. A lot of the side streets, like I said, is part of that, and I have, I have the entire list here, I'm allowed to electronically send it to everybody here to let you know the progress we've, we've made. Regarding double poles?
Yeah.
We've been working with your staff, with the city staff. We are down to 50 double poles in the city of Everett. Of that 50, National Grid is on 12 of them, all right? Other parties are on those poles as well. In terms of double...
Yeah, but see, with, the problem with that is, and what we got out of the committee was, you blame them, they blame you, this one's on the pole, we can't get to the pole, it's your pole ultimately, correct?
It's shared between us and Verizon.
Okay. So if Verizon's holding it up, do you oversee Verizon to tell them, get your stuff off the poles, they can change it?
The way it works now is, National Grid sets all the poles, and we're the first one to transfer off. Once everyone else is off, Verizon is the last one on the pole, and it's their responsibility to take it away.
Okay.
All right? So once we've transferred, and we had a good working committee meeting about a month ago, all, all were in attendance, because you have to, keep in mind that there are...
Where was that? Your, your place?
No, it was here, here in City Hall.
Oh, was it here?
Oh, yeah, yep. And we shared the database, we now have the city on the database, all right? Because you have fire alarm that's on the poles as well, and now you have an additional attachee, which is RCN.
Okay.
So this is another party that is responsible for transferring before Verizon can take it, take the pole away. But in terms of the sheer numbers, especially compared to other communities, we're in good shape, you know? I, I couldn't...
I mean, you're obviously here, so you, you care, but, and it's your job to be here, you know? Now, as us, as a multimillion-dollar city right now, we're expediting our people to go out to do this, where it should already be done. You see, it's not a fair practice, I don't think, you know what I'm saying? So, I think if we can get to some type of solution of the problem, that might be a great thing.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Now you have one of our people tied up with you guys, and going around looking at poles and lights and stuff like that, so we could use that resource somewhere else in the city.
We don't have someone tied up as, so much as, because the city is an attachee on the poles, so it's important that that person is on the database, so they, as they transfer, as you transfer a fire alarm off our poles.
So they can get communication to the other...
Exactly. And a lot of the fire alarm has been removed permanently, so...
I mean, I just, I would hate to have to be up here to do a moratorium on, and vote on that, because that, that would be, you know? And it's been considered, so...
I understand.
That's why you're here now. All right, thank you.
Excuse the customer, thanks.
I have, I have two more speakers.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Counselor Appolitano.
Thank you. I do just want to say for the record, because for the public, okay? On a, on a case-by-case basis, anytime I've reached out to you for assistance, it's been resolved. I've never had an issue on any case-by-case basis. It's important that the public understands that, that you have gone through quite a bit for us in, in case-by-case circumstances. It's just, the collective situation is now getting to the point where any one of us as an elected official or asked by a resident, how come this is still out? Why aren't you guys doing anything about it? Without any idea that we are, and we have been discussing this for quite some time, it's frustrating, because they don't care who gets it done, they just care that it's not being done. And we're the face, the first face they see, we're the, we're the ones that they're going to, they hear the most about it. And again, I'm not sure if you've gotten any feedback from any of the engineers or any of the people that've come up here representing your customers, looking for permits, but the membership has been very vocal to them, and as, from the chair, my feeling has always been that they can't do anything about this, we need to get somebody higher up, and again, that's the reason you're here.
Okay.
I do want to make a motion for item number 22, and that's regarding the lights. If we could get a, if we get an update at our next meeting, this is the last meeting for the year, we'll be meeting, I believe we're meeting the first week in, in January is our organizational meeting, so there'll be no new business there, but this would be the second meeting in January. So if you could give us an update as to where we stand with them, and take a look through the, through the streets. I'm going to be honest, before I go home tonight, I'm going to ride down Main Street, Elm Street, Broadway, Ferry, and Chelsea. And I'm going to take a count, and I'll email you that count that I find, and so again, tomorrow night when you go out, you know, you'll see that from the resident's perspective, we're not seeing 175 lights fixed. All we're seeing is the dark main streets, and in some of these areas, it's becoming a case of public safety.
Yeah.
So, um, I'm going to make a motion on item number twenty-two, that we extend this to our second meeting in January, because our meeting in, our first meeting in January is organizational. And Mr. Cameron, come back and give us an update and report.
Okay, before we second that, I have one more speaker.
Well, it's motion to second, but, yeah.
Councilor Hamlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Cameron, just a quick question regarding double poles. When you say that, like you said, Verizon was the last one on the pole, and you tell them to fix, to fix their wire, right? Does that mean that they have actually moved it on to the new pole?
No, they, when they, when they move their wire on to the new pole, that means everyone else is off, and then they take the pole with, in other words, they remove the double pole at the same time. That's correct.
Okay. Is, is all the wire off, including the, the, the grounding wire and everything is off the pole?
Well, the grounding wire is our responsibility, that would be done first.
So, so it's, there's, is there two grounding wires in, one on the old pole, one on the new pole?
Generally, there's only one, but if Verizon puts one of their own, then it would, it would be their responsibility.
Okay.
Yep.
So then, if we see everything but the, what's, what's the telephone, it's the second one up?
The, the, Verizon is the, the telephone's the lowest one.
The lowest one?
Lowest one, right.
Okay, so when that's the last thing on the line, we know that it's Verizon, it's Verizon that's holding it up?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
All set, Councilor? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, on item twenty-one, if I could?
Yes.
Thank you. I want to thank Mr. Cameron very much for being here and, and understanding that, you know, we're here for the quality of life issues that the city faces. I'm going to ask that, Mr. Cameron, don't leave the chamber, I think you might want to hear this. You, you don't have to sit back down, but I'd like to get a report, Mr. President, on who's trimming and brutalizing the trees in our city. That's number one, whether it's National Grid or Comcast. Has anybody noticed that the trees are butchered in this city? And they're killing them? We got a lot, you know, our arborist, our tree, tree doctor in the city, has got his hands full. That's number one. Number two, I would like to request that National Grid take an advertisement out in the local papers in Everett, if they decide they want to put it in the mail, that's different. Explaining this energy conservation, or these companies using their name. I mean, if I had a company and somebody was calling up saying it's National Grid, and that's what they're doing, and they're baiting you, and of course, and it's geared towards senior citizens, I know exactly, this is a con job, and that's just what it is. And we want, that's a suggestion, and maybe Mr. Cameron can get to the higher ups and tell us what action they'll do. And the other one is at the end of Ferry Street, close to Chelsea Street, there's ten lights out. It's a black hole. I rode by it tonight, the council president lives right there. It has been like that for months on end. And it really, you know, you don't mind one or two lights out, you really do, but this is ten lights. As I, as I said earlier, Mr. President, we have had some success on Revere Beach Parkway when there was sixty-two lights out. Sixty-two. And they did repair it, thanks to Mr. Cameron. And if I seem passionate about this issue, I am. It's like, uh, Councilor Marquez, you know? I've been after certain things for months up here. The wheels of justice are turning very slow with National Grid. I don't even want to get into the lockout situation, which is making this city unsafe, with the gas company, but it's all National Grid. They really need to go to charm school, okay? Now, I, I was under the impression that the mayor's office was going to coordinate some effort with the streetlights, but I haven't heard anything from them. So, Mr. Cameron, at that meeting in January fourteenth, could you provide some insight on the tree trimming, the lights at the end of Ferry Street with his ten? And I counted them on the way here tonight, and I really didn't notice it was that bad, because I don't really drive too often at nighttime. But anyway, in the robo calls, I want to know exactly what your company plans on doing. You'll have to reach out to the higher authorities in your company, Mr. Cameron, and tell them what the city of Everett council would like on that regard. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. So, and we have a second on that, so twenty-one, you want to get a report on who's trimming the trees?
Yes.
Now, she agreed to put an ad in our papers for the robo calls. And the third item was Ferry, Ferry Street, the lights, there's ten lights out.
Yes.
Go down the whole street, or Ferry Street?
Well, it's toward Chelsea Street. But he has the, um, I'd do the whole Ferry Street, because I didn't drive down, but I'm sure there's many more out.
Okay, all in favor? All opposed, the ayes have it. On, Councilor Napolitano, what's your pleasure on twenty-two?
Twenty-two, the motion is to hold this over to the second meet, uh, second meeting in January-
Which is the fourteenth.
For an upgrade- Of, an update on where we are with the lights? How much, what's been done, how, what they're finding out, what type of timetable we might be looking at, some of the ones that need more severe repair. If Mr. Cameron to come back.
Second on that. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. We'll go to regular order of business.
If we could please suspend, we won't take item number sixteen.
Second motion.
Sixteen, the people are in the audience.
Mr. President, item number sixteen is an order offered by Councilor Peter Napolitano's president that the city council hereby grants a motor vehicle dealer license renewal to Carlotta USA LLC at three fifty-three Third Street.
Councilor DeFlorio.
I believe this is a renewal, and everything is in order?
Yes, they all are.
Okay, so fable action on the order.
Motion, fable action, item number sixteen.
On the motion, Mr. President?
Councilor Matuski.
I just want to point out that there's a gentleman that runs this business, who's, Mr. Jose, in the back row there. Out of all these renewals, he is the only one that appeared tonight. We have seven or eight of them. And I, I think that shows the kind of business this man runs, I've known him for the last three years. And, you know, I think at some point, when you, if it was my license, I'd be up here, okay? Just to make an appearance. No matter how many years you've been in business, because you'll notice on one of the committee reports, we've got a little issue with another business, but I just want to mention that one of the businesses for their renewal is here tonight, and that's on item sixteen. Thank you.
Fable action.
Second.
Clerk, read the roll.
Councilor Capone.
Yes.
Councilor Delasola. Councilor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Councilor Hamlin.
Yes.
Councilor Marquez.
Yes.
Councilor Matuski.
Yes.
Councilor McKinnon.
Yes.
Councilor Simonelli.
Yes.
President Napolitano.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays, you have passed.
Pass the license. Thank you.
Please stop, I see the clerk, to our normal business hours.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion, if I could, take items ten, eleven, twelve, fifteen, and seventeen collectively, and if there's no, um, no outstanding taxes owed or any infractions on the business, move for fable action.
If, if you would like, Mr., um, excuse me, Councilor Marquez, um, all of them from, what we just did-
Could you, could you just read those num, items again? Ten, eleven, twelve, fifteen?
Yeah, all the, all the renewals on license, except-
What was the one after fifteen?
Uh, seventeen.
So you would have, if I'm not mistaken, excuse me, Mr. President, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, seventeen?
Oh, thirteen and fourteen were different than auto renewals, if you want to be inclusive of them.
Everything is, it's up to you, but everything is in line, they're all renewed.
Then why don't you just include all of them?
There's no issues.
Just read them if you could, and fable action if there's no problem with them.
Okay. I can read them. Item number ten, Mr. President, is a petition for Councilor Peter Napolitano's president that the Everett City Council hereby grants a license renewal to Ferry Street Service and Auto Sales at four sixty-four Ferry Street. Item number eleven, also by Council President Napolitano, that the Everett City Council hereby grants a motor vehicle dealer license renewal to Any Body Works Incorporated at thirty-six Mystic Street. Number twelve is also by Councilor Napolitano's president that the Everett City Council hereby grants a motor vehicle dealer license renewal to Everett Auto Gallery at nineteen ninety-three Revere Beach Parkway. Item number thirteen, the Council, the President, Napolitano, that the Everett City Council hereby grants a secondhand dealer's antique precious metals and pawnbroker's license renewal to Marzell Gold and Collectibles at three fifty-eight Ferry Street. Item number fourteen, that the Everett City Council hereby grants a lot, excuse me, a garage license renewal for Taurus LLC of Twelve Valley Street. Item number fifteen, that the Everett City Council hereby grants a motor vehicle dealer license renewal to European Motors of five eleven Second Street. And item number seventeen, that the Everett City Council hereby grants a motor vehicle dealer license renewal to Eastern Seals Incorporated at one fifty-three Ferry Street. And as, as I said, everything is in order, there's no issues.
Fable action on that, in that one vote be cast, but the clerk recorded accordingly for each item.
I believe we've moved away from that, I don't, I don't, yeah, we can't, yeah.
Yeah, we can do that, why not? If anybody opposes, say, just vote against one item, all right?
So you'll be voting for all items on, like I said, unless anybody has an issue on any of them? All right. All set?
Clerk, read the roll.
Okay. Councilor Capone?
Yes.
Councilor Delasola?
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Councilor Hamlin?
Yes.
Councilor Marquez?
Yes.
Councilor Matuski?
Yes.
Councilor McKinnon?
Yes.
Councilor Simonelli?
Yes.
President Napolitano?
Yes.
Nine yeas, at this time you have passed.
I'd like to make a motion to take one, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine collectively, uh, fable action. And a letter of thanks we sent out to these donors, if we could? I believe you have to read them.
Okay, just to reiterate, items one, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine? Okay. Second. Clerk, read the roll for item number one.
All in favor?
You need to make the motion on that.
They take them all at one?
Yeah, what, a, a letter of thanks.
Let them read the items.
Okay.
Clerk, read the items.
Item number one, order by Councilor Napolitano's president that the Everett City Council accept a donation of twenty-five thousand from Wind Resorts to the City of Everett Celebration Donation Account. Item number three, that the city council accepts a donation in the amount of one hundred dollars from the Everett Endem Club. That this donation will be deposited into the City of Everett's donation account for the City of Everett's Toy Drive. Item number four, that the Everett City Council accepts a donation of two hundred dollars from the Everett Endem Club. This donation will be deposited into the City of Everett's donation account to help support families at Thanksgiving. Item number five, that the Everett City Council accepts a donation of fifty dollars from Sergio Canilio. This donation will be deposited into the City of Everett's donation account for the City of Everett's Toy Drive. Item number six, that the Everett City Council accepts a donation in the amount of five thousand dollars from Night Shift Brewing Incorporated. This donation will be deposited into the City of Everett Celebration Account to support Village Fest. Item number seven, that the Everett City Council accepts a donation of one thousand two hundred dollars from Members Plus Credit Union, this was formerly, I believe, Everett Credit Union. Uh, this donation will be deposited into the City of Everett Celebration Account to support Village Fest. Item number eight, that the City, Everett City Council accepts a donation of one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars from the Everett Chamber of Commerce. This donation will be deposited into the City of Everett Celebration Account to support Village Fest. And item number nine, that the Everett City Council accepts a donation of one thousand dollars from Everett Car Service. This donation will be deposited into the City of Everett's donation account for the City of Everett Toy Drive.
The motion, fable action, clerk, read the roll.
Councilor Capone?
Yes.
Councilor Delasola?
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio? Councilor Hamlin?
Yes.
Councilor Marquez?
Yes.
Councilor Matuski?
Yes.
Councilor McKinnon?
Yes.
Councilor Simonelli?
Yes.
Councilor Napolitano?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays, you have passed.
He passed items one through nine, with the exception of two. Clerk, read item number two.
Item number two, Mr. President. In order to transfer forty-four thousand dollars from the DPW Executive Salary Account and thirty-two thousand dollars from the ISD Salary Account into the following accounts, Solicitor's salaries, twenty-nine thousand, Human Resources' salaries, fifteen thousand, and Health and Wellness' salaries, thirty-two thousand, for totals seventy-six thousand. This was postponed, as you know from last meeting.
Your pleasure. Do I have a second?
Excuse me, on the, on the, on the motion, has this been discussed, was this, because it was sent around?
This has been since November thirteenth.
And it, was it discussed where, was it out of the committee, or?
In, in, um, in here the whole time. It was on the thirteenth of November, postponed to the twenty-sixth of November. Then it was postponed to December tenth, and then December tenth, there was a seven to four vote to postpone it again to this, uh, to this meeting.
So there's no questions regarding the transfer salary accounts and stuff?
No, you, you, all, all the paperwork originally was all, you know, given to you, and then also too, that, um, if you remember that, um, the last meeting, um, was given to you privately, the, the letter not to, uh, to divulge anything, like it was, there was a personal letter that was given to you that was not available for the public, that was put, that's the letter you had. We, we, it kind of explained this in detail, what was going on, and that was given to you prior to last month, and that, excuse me, last meets, uh, the last meeting you had, and then you had, um, somebody, I forget who it was, somebody made a motion that they wanted, they'd just gotten the letter and they wanted to review it, and-
Mr. Clerk, clerk, if you'd stop right there.
That's all right.
Uh, Councilman, the chief of staff is here, the city solicitor, president of the city solicitor is here.
I don't have any question on it, I just thought that someone made that motion, I thought there was some discussion made, that's all.
No, this was, this was carried over till this meeting for this vote. I'm not sure if it was, that there were other questions, other information, but it was carried over.
Oh, I don't have an issue on it. I, I just said, no, I thought there was, there was someone wanted information and communication on it, that's all. I didn't know if there was any communication on it, but I don't have a problem with it.
Mr. Chairman, could we have them up?
Okay, is, do I have a second? We have a motion to bring the city solicitor and the chief of staff up before us. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Councilor Delsel. Wait, I'm sorry, Councilor Hamlin, I apologize.
Thank you, thank you. Through you, Mr. Chairman. Just two quick questions, the forty-four thousand and the thirty-two thousand, does that leave those two departments in any lack of funds?
It does not.
They have plenty of money now?
They do.
That's a lot of money to have extra. Anyway, I'll take that as an okay. The other one, the twenty-nine thousand, the fifteen thousand, and the thirty-two thousand, are those for multiple salaries or just three salaries?
Those are for multiple salaries.
So, in the twenty-nine thousand, how many people?
So, I don't have all the ad change forms, but one of the raises would be for me. I can explain a little bit of the expansion of my role. One is due to a salary study for the solicitor. We have promoted a member of the legal staff, and we've added a member of the legal staff.
Okay. Okay. What about the fifteen thousand, that's a job?
Uh, the fifteen thousand, I think, was communicated as confidential in that memo that you received.
Okay.
That, that is for, what's your question exactly, just so I can-
No, uh, where, what, what was that fifteen thousand dollars for?
Salary.
The salary for one person?
There's been an additional employee there, I'm, I'm not aware if it's between-
But you said that was for doing that, that confidential thing?
Well, you were, there was a memo that was distributed to all the members of the council two weeks ago.
Yes, yes.
And I think it was mentioned in that memo that that issue was confidential.
And it cost fifteen thousand? Is that what we're saying?
They're requesting fifteen thousand in salaries, yes.
For that one person to do that confidential memo?
No, no.
No, no.
It's a salary increase.
Annual increase.
It was what?
Annual salary.
An annual salary?
Yes.
I'm still not getting it. Was that a, was that an increase for one person, for fifteen thousand dollars for doing that, that thing?
No, the increase is for, it, it's for a new position.
A new position?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted in the first place. And then the thirty-two thousand?
The tur, the thirty-two thousand is a transfer for one, from one employee, an employee from one department to another.
So the salary already existed in one department, it's just, it, it's just going with that person to the next department?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Marquez, uh, just one question.
Sure.
You said there was a, the solicitor's salary included twenty-nine thousand. How much of that money was, uh, what did you say, there was a, um, some kind of study to find out the salaries for local city solicitors?
Yes.
And how much out of that twenty-nine thousand they spend to make about ten phone calls? That's what it is, right?
Well, I don't understand the question. I, I don't understand the question.
Well, what was, it's 29,000, how much of that was salary and how much was for the study for the city Solicitor's salaries?
The, I...
No, counsel, that, that money wasn't spent on, on any studies or anything like that, it's, we're requesting this based on the salary study and some of the expansions we've done in the, in the department, it's, in the housing area and, um, the, the hearings area and the city Solicitor's area. Okay, I just, I misunderstood what that was.
Yeah, counsel, that's all for salaries.
Oh, no, he didn't spend 29,000 on a survey like that. The 29,000, just give him the 29, don't spend them on a study.
All, all the numbers here reflected are for salaries.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Counsel Simonelli.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you for Councilman Simonelli to invite the guests. On the 32,000 dollars with the Health and Wellness, how many employees is that?
One.
It's, it's just one, but that, that individual was getting paid that same amount in another department, they've just transferred it to the Health and Wellness Center, so it's carrying over, there's no increases or anything, it's just from one department's line item to another.
And, and, do we know who the individual, who the individual is?
Uh, that's, uh...
See, that's confidential in nature, it's Human Resource.
That was outlined in a memo that you should have received.
Uh, Mr. President, I am not sure I'm, I'm paying it, Mr. President, I'm not sure I'm understanding about this letter that was sent that was in communication with the council that was confidential. I'm not certain we received, uh, a letter like that, so Counsel Simonelli is a little confused.
Counsel, the, the, the letter had to do with some of the breakdown on the monies, okay, and it was distributed in each, everybody's box, you have it right in front of you. Um, again, keeping in mind, it's confi, it require, it is confidential information, it's not privy to be discussed at this point. If you have a mo, if you feel that you need a deeper discussion, uh, you're welcome to make a motion, uh, for executive session, but keep in mind what you have in front of you is not there for open discussion.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Manlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, regarding the 29,000 for that study you, you talked about?
No.
Is that a, a one-time, uh, cost?
So, the 20, every denomination listed in item number two is for salary or salary increases, that's what all the money would go to.
Okay, so if someone got a 29,000 dollar salary increase?
No, that's for multiple, multiple people.
No, that's spread out.
Oh, I thought you said it was for one person?
No.
No, okay.
That's for multiple people, in that department.
Okay, so it's, it's departmental increase for all the people that work in the, uh, department?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, gentlemen, your pleasure.
Excuse me, the best of the names.
Thank you for coming up.
Favorable action.
Second.
Motion for favorable action, second. Clerk, read the roll.
Favorable action.
Excuse me, on favorable action, Counsel Capone?
No.
Counsel Delasola?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Marquesi?
No.
Counsel Matouski?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
President Napolitano?
Yes.
We have seven yeas and two nays, it's passed, we need a two-thirds vote.
It's, it's failed, I need a two-thirds majority vote.
It's failed.
Okay, the, the piece has failed.
Okay, okay, okay.
Counsel, if you'd like to bring it back, you need to bring it back for reconsideration.
Why don't you change his vote?
Okay, it, it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass either way.
I want it to be...
Okay, so change his vote to, to an a.
To an a.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, you have not passed item number two. Clerk, along the next, uh, read the next item.
Item eighteen.
Mr. President, um, item 18 is an ordinance for open air storage of salt and other items. Um, I also, just if I could, sorry to interrupt, uh, Counsel Capone, but speaking with the clerk, originally when this came in, it came in as a resolution, but now where it's gone farther and, and like I said, it's, it's gonna become an ordinance, he had recommended that we make an amendment to, uh, where it says a resolution by Counsel Capone, that an ordinance by Counsel Capone, to amend it, to make, change it to an ordinance, even though it says an ordinance for an open air, the actual piece should, should state, uh, ordinance by Counsel Fred Capone.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion was to change it from a resolution to an ordinance, it's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? The ayes have it. Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, through you to our clerk, I don't think we have a copy of this ordinance, so in fairness to my colleagues, I think we need to postpone this till, uh, meeting in January.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone item number 18 to the first meeting in January, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? The ayes have it. Clerk, read item number nineteen.
Item number nineteen, Mr. President, is an ordinance by Counsel Marquesi and Counsel Capone to prohibit any contractor from obtaining any contracts or permits from the City of Everett while a public contracted project they're working on for the city is delayed, unfinished, or over-contracted budget.
Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President, this is something that we've worked on for a while and there's some difference of opinions on what we can and cannot do with regards to administration and state. There are some, uh, very important reasons why we wanted to kind of beef this up, I think we need to do a little bit more research in it, I know that, uh, state is more involved with, uh, structures going vertical, horizontal is something, there's a little more leeway, but I think more time has to go into it, so at this point, I think the committee report was to refer it back to sponsor, we're gonna have to take another look at it and we'll try to introduce something that'll work. It's something that Counsel Marquesi and I have looked at and, and worked on, I know the entire council has joined onto it, there are some very valid points here, I think we do need to address them. Uh, just case in point is we're sitting around for a park for four years, that, that kind of stuff cannot happen. I know there's a bond posted, if we can't, uh, put some language together that can be enforced, then we need to pull the trigger on the bond a hell of a lot quicker than four years. So one way or the other, we need to protect the people in the city and we'll do what we have to do. So, at this point, I move to refer it back to sponsor.
The motion refer, number eight, uh, nineteen back to sponsor.
On motion?
Second, Counsel Marquesi.
Uh, yeah, it's not gonna be very long, but I'm just, wanna tell you, the committee report, it says, "I express my displeasure that eight meetings were held on a proposal, I don't understand why the city Solicitor didn't have, provide the appropriate language or amendments that would be enforceable to us." We had a park that got built, we had a casino that got built faster. So to tell me that we can't bring a, a, a contract up here and to tell me that we can't tell them, "Hey buddy, hit the road," every other city does this, to stay here and just say, "We have no powers here and that the mayor makes that decision," really? So, I'm getting yelled at by everybody in the street here about something that's not getting done, go call the mayor, and then they'll say, "Well, go back to them." This, we need language in it, this is the kind of language I don't wanna hear, I wanna hear something that's, gives us a little bit of power, as, uh, 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 Counsel Capone said, and everybody here deserves the right to, you know, read someone down, because this contract, I only screwed that up, there was a street there for three years he did the one on Main Street, and then it was, then it was horrible. So why are we granting people all these rights to do what they want? 20 units and no parking, so you think the, there's any teeth in here that the mayor's ever gonna go after this guy? It's not gonna happen, we need to have a little say in things here also, this is our city also. So, that's what disturbs me. And if we have to send this back to the city Solicitor, they better come back here with something. I don't care, not, not this crap. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion before you, it's been seconded, to refer back to sponsor, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? The ayes have it. Clerk, read item number twenty-three.
Item number three, Mr. President, is an order by Counsel Peter Napolitano's President, that the Committee on Legislative Affairs and Elections updates the City Council rules. This was postponed over from the last meeting.
Favorable action.
Second.
We have a motion for favorable action on item number twenty-three, it's been seconded, clerk, read the roll.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Delasola?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Marquesi?
Yes.
Counsel Matouski?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
President Napolitano?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays, you have passed.
Just one more question, Mr. President. My fifth, clerk, read item number twenty-four.
Clerk, read item number twenty-four.
Item number twenty-four, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Leo McKinnon, that Senator DiDomenico and Representative McGonigal update the City Council on medical cameras in ICU for patients entering ICU after serious complications after a medical issue.
Counsel McKinnon.
Why, thank you, Mr. President. You've been a gracious president tonight. Um, I only have five minutes, I can, I was just... Five. Um, this right here, I want just to walk to Senator DiDomenico, you know, also Representative McGonigal. Uh, there is a documentary right now, it's on HBO, it is called Lead Out, and it's a woman from Wisconsin, which was on a drug that was getting, a flabbergasted, was actually getting a routine hip surgery, enters into an ICU unit where there is no drug. The only, the only person that was in the ICU unit is a camera that looks at 165 patients. And there is one nurse on staff that, and she testified in open court that the, uh, two days while this was going on. And she went in there with half her blood, half her body, half her bone because of the blood, and was in critical care, immediately adopted by a bedside, so if you, if you get a chance to look at this, this documentary, you'll see what the patient went through, you'll see what the family went through, and then you'll see what these companies and these bigger hospitals, rural hospitals right now, I believe it was in Wisconsin, but we need to actually investigate this and be proactive on it and see if we can send it to our, uh, state legislators to actually make sure that it doesn't happen here. So I'd like this to go to them, second the January, the response back, I spoke to both of them already on this, they're gonna be looking into it and if, uh, we can have Mr. Megan send information to Mr. McGonigal's secretary.
I will, on, on the actual movie itself itself, I will forward that to them.
Lead Out, it's called Lead Out, I gave this to Joe as well and Ann Sal, so they both know it, uh, they can take a look at it and see what other, you know, states are doing right now, like they were concerned that it was actually coming here now, and I said, "I don't believe it is, but I don't want them to come."
Did you want, um, the January 14th or the January 2?
If they could come back.
January 14th?
Yes. Yes, that gives them enough time to research.
Okay, uh, we have a motion to refer this to, um, Senator DiDomenico, Representative McGonigal, uh, it's been seconded, all in favor, for a response back on a meeting in January?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? The ayes have it. Clerk, read item number twenty-five.
Item number twenty-five, Mr. President, is offered by, uh, Counsel Michael McLaughlin. It's a resolution that the Assistant Superintendent Charles Abramski appear at the next Ways and Means Committee meeting to discuss how the 2.5 million dollars that was recently transferred to the School Department has been spent in regards to hiring back teachers. Um, as he was leaving, Counsel McLaughlin informed me, I guess he had some issue with his, but he asked if somebody could just, uh, refer it to the next meeting.
Counsel Capone.
I was, I was actually gonna, thank you, Mr. President, as, as a courtesy to our colleague who's not here, I was just gonna request that we postpone it to our next full meeting in January.
Do I have a second? Have a motion to postpone this to our meeting in January, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? The ayes have it. Clerk, read item number twenty-six.
Item number twenty-six, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Michael Marquesi, that the city Solicitor or his honor, the mayor, come to explain if there was a $300,000 payment to any individual on behalf of the city and have there been any other payments to individuals over the past few years on behalf of the city.
Counsel Marquesi.
Um, would anybody like to come before, sure.
Would you like the city Solicitor and the...
Yes, I would, please, both of them.
Do I have a second?
Kevin.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? The ayes have it. Welcome back, gentlemen.
Thank you. Good to be back.
To, yeah, either or, is there any truth to this, um, payment that's, uh, going out to the City of Everett and any individual?
Is this, uh, is this a reference to the articles that have been written in the newspaper?
Articles that's written in the papers, is there any truth to it?
There, there's no truth to it whatsoever, there are no negotiations, there are no settlement amounts, the mayor's not ready to take any action on anything, as a matter of fact, there are no current claims, lawsuits with the MCAD or Superior Court.
All right, now, are there any, I, I, okay, now, let's check, have there been any payments in the past to something regarding this?
No.
Harassment, would you know, the past 10, 15 years?
In the past 10 years, there were four settlements for, um, unlawful termination.
Yep.
Uh, they basically are around the area of 2009 to 2012, and I think that information was given to Counsel Capone as part of a request for documents.
Okay.
Four different settlements, and that's, that's over 12 years.
Um, I know there was obviously some kind of, um, harassment, uh, claims filed, will there be anybody fired, will be anybody transferred, or will things stay the same?
So, personnel moves and issues aren't, uh, they're confidential, but I can tell you that, you're right, a claim was filed, it was investigated immediately, interviews of all parties, action was taken to remediate, and that action can be moving people from certain departments, changing schedules, discipline, but actions were taken and the case matter was closed.
Uh, just to, uh, reiterate, uh, repeat it, was MCAD involved in these?
In, in these, uh, which one, are we speaking of the...
This, this harassment, um, this, this, this case we're talking about here?
We, there has been no claim filed with the MCAD, no lawsuits filed with the Superior Court.
Not to our knowledge?
Not to our knowledge, we've been served with none.
So what we're saying is this $300,000 payment doesn't exist?
It does not exist. The story is, um, not true in any way, shape, or form.
Not true. All right, that's, uh, end of my questions, if anybody has anything else.
Counsel Matouski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I find it puzzling, I don't know, two of the newspapers at least had an article written about a certain department in the city and a certain employee was, uh, had trauma related to her job and filed a claim, but there was a claim made, you say?
There was a claim made with the city.
Uh, yeah, okay. And what happened with that?
So when a claim is made with the city, um, the legal department and HR are tasked with investigating that claim, so we take the claim and, and in any situation, we'll interview them, find out who else we need to interview, do a full investigation, evaluate the claim, and then the city's responsibility in a case like that is to assure that we're accommodating people in accordance with the law. So if someone is being harassed and they are requesting change in hours, we can do something like that, or if someone needs to be removed from the department, we can do something like that. And once that's done, unless there are further complaints, we close the complaint.
Okay, and are we covered by insurance for any of this, or does this actually come out of the treasury?
If some events aren't insurable, intentional acts might not be in certain circumstances.
Intentional meaning harassment, uh...
That depends, so the answer to that question is, if someone does file with the MCAD or if they file a lawsuit, we would refer to our insurance company for that evaluation and generally, we're covered.
Well, how about the, uh, the school department issue? That affects, even though it's the school department?
Yes.
Uh, the claim made by the, the parties involved there, uh, you have, I know it's the school department, but you don't handle any of that? Well, how about the the school department issue? That affects, even though it's the school department?
Yes.
The claim made by the the parties involved there, you have, I know it's the school department, but you don't handle any of that?
We we don't, they've hired outside counsel, and I do believe insurance would attach in that case to pay for counsel.
So would be covered, are we covered for that type of situation?
It depends on which department and which policy.
Well, I'm puzzled, because I I've never, you know, I don't know how somebody has information, and it's printed in the paper, and then all of a sudden, it's not true. The city solicitor was quoted as saying she's never heard of it before, but there was a a claim made.
No, she, so that article that you read quoting myself and the solicitor is, if we could look at it, it states that no claims were made, no settlements, no negotiations have happened, and the mayor is not poised to do anything. That case was, that case came to our department, the complaints were made, the remediated action that was requested was taken, and the matter was closed, there is no.
Do you bring any of that matter, I only have a few, a minute or so here?
Less than that.
Any of that information, do you bring to the city council?
Any information that's, any information that's not confidential or requested, we'll bring any information.
But any money amount, we would have to vote on anyway, am I correct?
Well, that would depend if if an insurer was.
If it wasn't insured, we'd vote on it, okay. Because, you know, in this day and age, you hear so much about these things, you know, I hope that somebody's held responsible if it does in fact be true, and at least the taxpayers of this city get some, okay, we had to pay some money, but that person's no longer gonna be able to do it, because they're not employed in the city anymore. That's the bottom line, I'm getting that, but if it's not happening, that's a good thing, so I, you know, I can only say what I've heard, so.
So for for clarity, a claim was made to Human Resources, and opened, investigated, and closed, no claims have been made with the MCAD, no claim, no, no cases have been filed.
So it's a closed case, technically.
As far as the city's concerned?
Okay, thank you very much, thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel McKinnon.
Please, Mr. President, we're invited guests, so right now you stated that there's no claims right now.
And in related to this, the reporting, yes, there are.
And we would be privy to such claims if there was gonna be a monetary settlement, it would be coming before here.
If it was paid by the city, yeah, if it was paid by the insurer.
So we would have some enforcement, is that correct?
If it was paid by insurer, we we would just be a third-party transaction.
What do you mean by, when you say paid by insurer?
Like like a car accident, if someone rear-ended you and you you're injured and you get.
The way I'm asking is I want everybody to get it at home.
Sure, so it it's like into a car accident, somebody makes a claim after an accident, and let's say, you know, they broke their wrist, and that has a certain value, and the insurance company does its evaluation.
Okay.
That money goes from the third-party right to the person, in this case, it wouldn't go through the city, it would go from the third-party carrier right to the individual.
Okay, now, do we have such insurance that's covered in us?
We do.
As well as our employees, and as well as the school?
We do.
Right?
We do.
And is that covered with a taxpayer note?
It's, well, the premiums are paid by the city, yes.
With a taxpayer note?
Yes. Whether there's a claim or not.
We're privy to this, during weather times and stuff like that.
Sure.
Okay.
Yep.
And, let's see, was the union involved with this, that any point from any of the other?
This was a non-union issue.
It's a non-union?
This was a non-union issue.
Okay, so there was no union involved?
No.
And why is that?
Because the employee, the employee wasn't a union.
Okay, all right, I I did want to, you know, clarify that. Is there any active cases right now, and other active cases?
I mean, tree limbs fall, and potholes get hit, things like that, just dozens and dozens.
Personal cases?
Not that I'm aware of.
No.
We have, let me say, so we do have a special insurance, do you have a cost for any of that, or is one?
I do not.
Okay, and, let's see, the school side, who's funding that was allocated, you have the cost?
I can't speak to that, I can only tell you what I read, and I think it was for an investigation, the money allocated by the school committee was for an investigation, I believe.
And that, was it for insurance maybe, or?
I I don't have firsthand knowledge of that, I wasn't involved, I I think it was for an investigation, I'm not sure.
Or, there are other private investigations that come into that?
I I would imagine they go independent.
All right. And, let's see.
Hasn't been three, don't worry, he's still got.
Three, you get the question. Settle down, okay? We want, settle down, I always gotta, just give you another time, but I'm gonna try to explain to my colleagues.
Burning up everybody else's time, it's all right.
All right, so, I just wanted to get, you know, we're doing everything by the book, and we don't need to be reading any more, or whatever, yeah, things, right?
I I always wish for only the correct news to be reported.
And what they, they don't, but partly because they asked you, and asked the city solicitor, what was, they quoted you in the paper.
That was a pretty good article.
Okay, so that was probably accurate?
The article that in the independent was was accurate.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you to our invited guests, to Mr. Solicitor, to Solicitor, as you referred to, I did make a more discreet request, and I got the information, I do appreciate that. I was told at the time that there were no claims, I didn't know anything of mediation or anything of that nature that was done, I don't know if you're at liberty to talk about that. I wouldn't, in in a particular sense, I wouldn't be able to talk about particulars, but if you're talking about this case, there was, there is, there are no negotiations, mediations. So nothing happened at all at that? There's been nothing since we've closed the case. Okay, so the city's closed the case, but from the point of view of the disgruntled employee, we don't know whether they're gonna go with that. Anyone is is allowed to exercise their rights anytime they want, but we've not heard. Okay. This reporting is is wholly and fully false. Okay, all right, thank you very much. You're welcome. I don't have any other questions.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So the the person that was filing the claim no longer works for the city, right?
I'm not at liberty to say.
Is is, was that her choice to?
She's made her own choices, yes.
To no longer work for the city?
I can't, I can't say.
You can't say, okay, well, I know the case is closed, but I hope that, you know, I hope things are done the right way, that's all I can say. The $300,000 that this paper's writing about, I don't understand how we can allow a paper in the City of Everett to just constantly and constantly and constantly go after city health, and get away with it. How can they sit there and just print lies and get away with it? I, I mean, enough is enough, we've had it with this paper, okay? I don't like negativity, I don't like them in our city, and I'm not gonna advertise with them ever again, and I hope they get it now, and that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Counsel Simonelli.
Through you for Councilman Simonelli. So the claim and the complaint is for the Wellness Center?
Yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, through you to our invited guest, Councilman Simonelli, I'd like to know, why doesn't the council ever know anything about the claims?
Because personnel issues are confidential.
Are all the claims in the City of Everett confidential?
Personnel issues are confidential.
Personnel issues are.
Personnel falls under the executive branch, it doesn't fall under legislative, that's the reason why we don't.
Are other claims held before the city council?
We have a risks assessment division in the legal department, we handle the insurance claims.
Mr. Chairman, there's a recommendation, I think, in this body, that there should be a finance committee that would handle stuff like that, so does the council would know?
That's actually what Ways and Means does.
Ways and Means.
Okay, and we would only be informed if there was an appropriation, that they needed us to transfer money to fund the settlement.
So anything to do with the insurance, or in-house, or something like that?
It's part of the budget.
All right. More?
I think the city is well insured and appropriately insured for for these matters.
So the $300,000, did somebody pay for that?
The $300,000 figure is a complete falsehood.
So the $300,000, then there's no claim?
Right, I think the contention is that the paper had advertised it was $300 settlement, there is $300,000, there has not been a $300,000 settlement.
There's been no settlement discussions.
And there's been no appropriations for the city council to fund or move any money into that.
Thank you, Mr. President.
No discussions of that figure have been had with the administration.
Any figure. We've we've engaged in no settlement discussions.
Counsel Marquesi, your pleasure, on the piece.
I'm satisfied with the answer. I'm I'm satisfied with the response today, I mean, I'm just, I go what I read, you know, and I've read it more than once, so that's, if it's one time, I don't believe it, if I see it a couple of times, I believe it, but I'd just like to excuse both of them, and we'll thank you guys, and have a happy new year.
Thank you, Counsel. Thank you, members of the council.
Happy New Year to the board as well.
Rich, congratulations.
Counsel, not board.
I think this one's a, thank you. Refer back to sponsor.
Second motion.
The motion, I, item number 26, back to sponsor, but second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Before we adjourn, I want to wish the residents of Everett a happy new year, we look forward to being at your service for the next, for the coming year, I'll stand a motion for.
So moved, to adjourn?
To adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Happy New Year.